Well, the technology holds together. We'll be doing that because we got me doing stuff.
Ladies and gentlemen, I hereby call to order this meeting of the Sedalia City Council on the first day of December, part of the 2025-2026 session. The meeting is now called to order. The first item on our agenda is legislative prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Chapel Mattson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chapel Mattson. This evening, we are honored to have Scout Group 61 with us. So what I'd like to do is go ahead and invite them forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Got salute. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the development of its citizens, foundation, underground, irreversible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Ames.
Here.
Scribner.
Here.
Bogus.
Here.
Hiller.
Here.
Cross.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
The first item on our agenda is a presentation request from the embassy. We'll go ahead and invite representatives from the embassy forward to go ahead and give a presentation.
A life, but a productive life in society, which is one of the major reasons I decided at this point in my life to become a board member here. And I believe in the cause and thank you guys for your time and you're here.
Thank you.
Chad, what do you do now?
I am a construction contractor locally, father of two, one of which is Sedalia Police Department. Proud of them.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Aaron. So what I like to do is I like to tell people that we build solutions in men. And you might ask, what solutions? And I say to ongoing problems. Aaron, tell me about what you told me about your father.
So my father, he tried to kill my whole family and then while in prison, he committed suicide.
How old were you at the time?
Five.
So tell me what was, uh, tell me about the dads that came after that.
Uh, so I had my dad, stepdad Wilbur, and he led me when I was 10 to crack and other drugs.
So tell me basically what happened from there with you.
Uh, from there, it's kind of a downhill spiral. I started taking morphine that my mom was prescribed. I was stealing that from her, which led me into the addiction of fentanyl and heroin.
So what happened to your mother from there?
My mother is incarcerated in prison for eight years.
Tell me where you work.
Duke Manufacturing.
How long have you been there?
Almost three years.
Aaron was a problem born of a problem. Now Aaron is a solution. Praise God. So Aaron had written out something that he wanted to share tonight, but I, I, I wanted to make sure you all knew who was sharing what he's about to share. Because a lot of times we don't know. Uh, we have an administrative assistant named Harley that he, he does background checks on everybody. He gets to know everybody very well, their past up to coming into the embassy. As executive director, I don't want to know their past. I'm more concerned about who they are, where they're at, and where they're going. And so on the way in here tonight was the first time that I had heard anything that he just shared with you guys. And so he, he put this together that he wanted to share with you all. And I thought, would you be willing to share that publicly with everyone here? Because uh, I think it's important. It's not, so many of the people that come to the embassy aren't people that are coming from a good home, a good upbringing that they chose to run walk, you know? Does that make sense? Uh, a lot of them are third, fourth generation, uh, struggles. At five years old, they barely escaped being murdered by his father, you know? Um, I recently lost my father and he passed away 85 years old. And so I had him this whole time as a good father, you know? I couldn't imagine having that as a father. And then at five years old, he hung himself in prison. From there, at 10 years old, beginning to smoke crack with your, your father's feet, you know, the one that lived down hall. So uh, and I'm just blown away at the fact that he went from that to he's held a job at Duke for three years, you know? And he was telling me tonight too, he's got new tires on his vehicle that he owns outright and they're all brand new. They match. That might not mean a lot to a whole lot of people, but so yeah, if you'd want to share that, Aaron, that'd be great.
I want to express my deepest gratitude to the embassy. When I walked through the store, I was lost in addiction, overwhelmed by depression, and dangerously close to giving up on life. Then the embassy became a place of safety, hope, and transformation through its guidance, support, and unwavering belief in me. I found the strength to fight for my future. Today I am over two years sober. I own my own car. I lead Bible studies and I have the privilege of helping other men learn to walk in their sobriety and faith. My family is proud of the man I am becoming and I am proud of the life I am building. None of this would have been possible without the embassy's care and the foundation that helped me rebuild. Thank you for saving my life and giving me a chance to live it with purpose.
Thank you, Aaron. Um, you know, at this point in the game, we lean on Aaron. In the beginning, he leaned on us extensively. And now we've begun to lean on him as we continue to grow our reach into the dark parts of Pediscouting. So I think we have, um, and you know, I was going to say this too, as you stop and think about his past and what he grew up in, what chance did he have really? I mean, an honest chance. What, what did he have at life? And, and really it wasn't until the embassy that you really had a chance. You know, as, as you begin to talk to him, you find out that we were that chance. So uh, thank you all for your support and, and what, what we're looking to do. So our original two requests was a total of $150,000. We have billed the city $60,995.53. Work in progress is $89,447. This is the basement entry and foundation work that should be completed here in another couple of months. So we were able to get the new roof on. That's the before and the after. So the classroom, uh, which also has, has doubled as a meeting room for several different things in Sedalia as we begin to uh, join forces with other agencies. So this is the foundation repair. Uh, you can see it was starting to crumble under and around the doorway and that's all new now. So this is what is currently being worked on. You see how it was falling in and now it's getting new concrete, new footings, new everything. The blueprints for the backside of that house is drawn up to where they'll eventually look like this. So 602 South Monita, we had new soffits and fascia put on, made a huge difference in the appearance of that house and the function of it. The additional work needed at 322 West 7th is we need to replace the broken and inefficient windows and the wood trim around those that are, that are rotting away. Uh, repair and paint the soffit and the fascia board. The additional work needed at 602 South Monita is install a new water system and plumbing. Uh, we had a, we had the city knock on our door a couple of months ago and said, you all realize you have a leak? And we said, no. He goes, yeah, you're losing about 40 gallons an hour somewhere in the house. Down in the basement, luckily it was right next to our floor drain. One of the old pipes had just burst and had begun leaking that much down into the drain. So we were able to get that patched. But you know, some of that old piping is just brittle and, and uh, done with. So install a new heat system and ductwork, replace the roof, renovate the upstairs apartment, which is dysfunctional, replace the outside fire escape egress and renovate the downstairs apartment. Uh, this is what the outside fire escape egress looks like currently. We're asking the city council for $200,000 additional funding through the opioid settlement to complete the work described. Any questions?
Does council have any questions for the representatives from the embassy? It doesn't look like we have any questions.
Oh, go ahead, Jack.
What's, what's the balance of the opioid settlement money?
Right now, I believe we have $256,000 that are not committed to anything, any type of projects.
How many people do you house between the two buildings? Between the two buildings, it's 21.
How long generally do they stay in the program there at the buildings?
Six months.
Six months.
Three months at the 602. That's our intake house where they share a room with an indispensable for several reasons, you know, humility and then accountability. And then uh, after they've been there three months, done everything they're supposed to do, they can, they can move, they have an opportunity then to move up into 322 where they can get their own bedroom, a little bit more privacy, a little bit more space and, and kind of begin to prepare to exit the program. Okay. Um, what kind of uh, requirements do you have for someone to stay at an embassy? Like what, what is their weekly, monthly requirements? And do you have any, as far as do they need to have a job? Is there drug testing? The first three, three weeks, they're not allowed to leave the property without a chaperone and they're not allowed to work. They're there to, they've got to do a bunch of community service. They've got to do uh, homework curriculum, that sort of thing. Uh, and then get prepared to, to get a job, get a lot of their stuff, their paperwork in order and that sort of thing. And then after three weeks, they're required to have a job and uh, then from three weeks, getting their job, then they're, they're required to set up a bank account, you know, that sort of thing. Yeah, yeah, 10 church. We've got, I mean, we've got, we've got their lives pretty intensely scheduled all the way every evening with different classes and stuff and, and on the weekend. And then of course church on Sunday.
So you guys are truly rehabilitating people.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, basically rebuild.
That's awesome.
Yeah, thank you.
My question is that the money that's in this account, the opioid account that they're requesting, it could only be used for things such as this, correct? It cannot be moved around and used for anything else.
That is correct.
Will the remodeling on the second floor allow you to take any more guys in for it? Or what will that remodeling do on the, I don't, I'm sorry.
Not apartment.
Yeah, would that, what will that allow more classrooms or what would that be used for?
So more than anything, it'll help us to attract better staff. Cause uh, our live-in staff is, we, we can't pay them. There's.
How many live in?
Pay them.
How many staff members live in?
So we have one in 322 and then we have two in 602. And that upstairs apartment and the downstairs apartment is where the, those staff members would stay. So.
So it'd be better accommodations for staff.
Yes, they would be able to have their own private bathroom, their own private shower, kitchenette, that sort of thing. So gives them a little bit of a respite, you know, from the, what can be the madness. 602 can be pretty wild at times because you've got people coming out of homelessness. You've got people coming directly out of DOC. You've got people coming out directly out of long-term addiction to where, I mean, honestly, it can, it's, it's madness. It really is. And to be around that all the time, you know, I really want to take better care of our staff, you know?
You really need those staff members there 24 hours a day.
24 hours, yeah. Yeah, we want someone, especially in that house there all the time.
Yeah, very good.
Yeah, it was, it's unusable. Yeah, a dysfunctional kitchenette. And then there's a, there was at one time a bathroom in there, but it's, none of it works. None of the plumbing works. There's nothing there. But hopes and dreams, which is why we're here.
You said your staff members were volunteers?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Pretty much former people that have gone through the program?
Yes, typically. Yeah. Now we have uh, entertained bringing someone in from the outside, you know, for like ministry manager. Um, the housing monitors, we kind of like to use them as people that are coming up through the program because it gets, you know, not everybody's cut out to be a leader, but for those that are, um, it gives them an opportunity to stretch their legs in a safe place, if that makes sense, you know? So Aaron wasn't one of our housing monitors, but uh, he was a little more of a slow grow and at times, uh, you know? But uh, but he's become one of our leaders now, you know, at uh, just overall, you know, and going by the house, one of our alumni that goes by, checks in on guys, you know, takes care of stuff. If we got someone that's having issues, you know, we can send him in and have him, him, you know, talk with them and kind of, kind of talk them down, so to speak, you know?
Any other questions, council? So at this time, if this is something you guys would like to consider uh, folding into next year's budget, I would entertain a motion to do so.
I'd make that motion.
Have a motion in a second to go ahead and include this in next year's budget. Uh, do I have any council discussion regarding that motion? Having heard none, all is a favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we'll go ahead and bring that back to you uh, for next year's budget. Thank you, Mr. McLean.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is the Eagle Scout Flag drop-off box presentation. So tonight, we are pleased to recognize an outstanding contribution to our community made as a part of the Eagle Scout project. Jack Frederick, a local scout, has constructed a flag drop-off boxes for our police department and our two fire stations. These boxes will serve as a respectful and dignified way for members of the public to retire worn American flags in accordance with tradition. At this time, I would like to invite forward Fire Chief Irwin and Police Chief Woolery. Fire Chief Irwin will share a few words and express gratitude on behalf of both the fire department and the police department.
Good evening, everybody. Um, some of you may not know, but an Eagle Scout is the highest award a scout can receive. And I think that is admirable and very well done. The US flag holds deep significance within the emergency services. It is worn on all of our uniforms as a symbol of our commitment to the principles of the constitutional republic and the communities that we serve. The, this Eagle Scout project to build a US flag retirement box provides a dignified way to collect worn and tattered flags so that they may be properly retired. Eagle Scouts have a long tradition of strengthening their communities through service, leadership, and civic responsibilities. And this project reflects those values with pride. Currently, when a flag, when the fire department receives a flag, they are placed on a shelf and stored until they can be transferred for retirement. These new boxes offer a more respectful and fitting place for aging flags to rest while awaiting their final honor. The fire department and police department are grateful and honored to receive these boxes, which reflect both respect to our nation's flag, deserve, deserves an enduring commitment of the Eagle Scout to serving the community. Mr. Frederick?
On behalf of the Sedalia Fire Department, I appreciate what you've done for us. Thank you. If you'd like to say a few words, you may.
Comes on the agenda for consideration through public safety. Uh, our first one is a strategic budget planning presentation from Chief, uh, Fire Chief Matt Irwin.
Come on up, Chief Irwin, and you have the floor.
Good evening, everybody. It's my favorite time of year. So this evening, we're going to go over um, kind of what the fire department has done over the last few years and what we plan to do over the next year and years to come. So our administrative focus, starting in trans, in 2022, when I was promoted to Fire Chief, um, these were our major updates, updates and driving forward to meet today's demands. We were looking at staffing, apparatus, equipment, community risk reduction, community involvement, uh, facilities and training. So our suppression staff, those are the, um, everybody that goes out and actually fights the fire. Um, prior to 2010, our minimum staffing was 10. We ran three apparatus and responded to an average of 600 calls a year. And you can see the numbers as we move back through the year. In 2024, we requested uh, minimum staffing go to 14. It was unfunded. In 2025, last year, we asked the minimum staffing go to 14. It was partially funded and where we are today with a minimum staffing of 12, uh, running five apparatus. Um, this year, we're going to currently, we're going to land about 3,100 calls for service. Um, it's about a 10% increase from our call volume last year. Um, and a significant jump from 15 years ago when we were only averaging 600 calls for service. So our support staff, this is myself, the deputy fire chief, our two inspectors. In 2018, um, uh, when Chief Ditzfeld retired and Chief Harold took over, we had a chief, a deputy chief, an administrative captain, one fire inspector. In 2024, we asked for, uh, requested a preparedness officer, training officer. It was unfunded. 2025, we again asked for a training and preparedness officer, um, and a mechanic. They were both unfunded. Um, currently we are sitting since 2022 as a chief, a deputy chief, um, and two fire inspectors. One of those fire inspectors was acquired through the administrative captain's position that we deleted, um, because we were unable to fill it from within. So we made the transition to adding a second fire inspector, um, to get out and do, um, fire inspections. This is current list or was a current list of our fire apparatus. Um, you can see our, our frontline from 2023 to 2025. Um, the green numbers are good. The red numbers are bad and FPA requires that frontline apparatus be, be sent to reserve status after 10 years. Um, so in 2025, um, you can see that what our, what our status is, I got one more. Um, next year, when the last engine arrives, you will see that all of our apparatus meet the NFPA requirements um, for reserve and frontline apparatus, um, with the exception of the brush truck, which we'll get to later in the slides. Um, uh, so equipment that we requested um, in 2024 and to 25 for last fiscal year, um, what was requested and what was um, fulfilled. Uh, Opticon was fulfilled. Um, we are currently still working through that. All the equipment is in place. Uh, we're just waiting for MoDOT to let us turn it on. Um, ballistic vests for the fire department. Uh, we was partially funded with a grant and city funds. Water rescue suits, we were partially funded for MCI kits, which are mass casualty kits. Their tourniquets and um, uh, stop bleed kits were partially funded. The drones is first reponder program was partially funded. Uh, the police side went to the live 911. Um, and then our radio monitoring, SCBA monitoring, extrication equipment, UTV and inflatables, um, were not funded. Facility, facilities, uh, we requested the station one replacement, um, which was funded. Our training facility, which was partially funded due to cost restraints, we actually removed the classroom out of that to get under budget. So we still have a. out of that to get under budget. So we still have a, a training facility to do live burns. We're just going to be short on classroom space. So we'll be moving from one place to the other. And of course, over the last few years, we've discussed Stations 3 and 3 and 4. They have still yet to be unfunded. We'll get to that as well. Our training hours that the Fire Department goes through. Back in 2018, we averaged about 83 hours of training per person. This was from, from my, my position all the way down. In 2025, we, I believe we got the numbers this morning, we're at about 20,200 hours of training that we have done this year, which is equates to about 408 hours of training per member of the department. It's a 1,000% increase. These training hours are for certifications that we require our personnel to have. There are also CEUs for their EMT. And then there are training hours that are required by ISO. The next slide, I believe, has our ISO certification on it to keep our ISO too. Each member of the department is required to meet a certain number of hours to train. We are exceeding those hours right now with 408. So we are helping with our, our ISO. In 2023, we started a major overhaul of removing and removal of existing and outdated SOGs and operating procedures. We've added numerous additions this past year to address the new mindset and design to meet the demands of today, and we are continually updating them. It is a never ending, seems like never ending thing to do, because as things change, we have to update our policies. Our community risk reduction, there's a lot of numbers on here, but the numbers that I really want you to pay attention to are on 2019 and 24. In 2019, we did 1,056 inspections. 210 of those inspections had no violations, or 20% of our inspections had no, no violations. In 2024, we do not have the, the numbers currently because we're still in 2025. In 2024, we did 2,227 inspections. 971 of those had no violations, or 44% of our businesses and in places that we inspect within the community had no violations. This is attributed a lot to our community buy-in from our businesses to making sure that fire inspections and their life safety plans are in place. We are currently sitting at just over 1,700 inspections. The, the year is still not done, with 73 new occupancies. I want you to pay particular attention to 25 this year with 17 versus the 22, 27. So those numbers are all encompassing. So the 22, 27 were our first time going to a business, plus our reoccurring trips that we had to go to in that year. This year, we still have a number of businesses, the same number of businesses that we're inspecting, we're just going to them less. So I expect this number, the 44% number to be even higher for no violations on the first time that we're going to, to businesses. It is a credit to our businesses, and I thank them for, for working hard to, to keep their businesses safe for us. Our community involvement. 2021, you can see the number of events that we went to. Events are very important to us. In 2025, we went over to over 275 events. These are parades, these are fireworks shows, these are going to schools, these are going to daycares, these are people coming into our facility and doing tours. We do a number of events. Our Fire Pup Program is fantastic. Mr. Carver does a great job with that. So you can see that we're out in the community a lot. All of this, our community risk reduction, our community involvement, our training hours, all result in basically our ISO. And you guys got to see this last year when we actually were, got our ISO too. We are in the top 7% for fire safety in the nation. And you can see the class, the, in the 2004 Class 2s, there's 2,004 of them in the nation. You can see where we kind of rank among the nation. So we do a very good job. We try to do a very good job. We try to put our best foot forward in everything that we do. So now we're going to get to this part for 2026 that we're requesting. So this year, we are requesting Assistant Chief of Training. This Chief Training Officer will manage the 20-plus thousand hours of recertifications needed annually. He will also be our live fire coordinator. They will conduct daily training amongst all the shifts. They will conduct the Fire Academy classes. They will do our EMT training. They will coordinate training with our local and regional partners, and they're also responsible for the facilities, the training facilities and its use. So even though our fire, live fire training facility, and that's a picture of it there, even though we were opening it up to anybody that wants to come use it, any department that wants to come use it and do training on it, we will open it up to those people. I will require that our Training Officer is there to make sure that it's being used properly and, and nobody gets hurt and nobody's put in danger. We are also asking for an Assistant Chief of Emergency Preparedness. This person will be, be the liaison between the City of Sedalia, not just the Fire Department, but the city as a whole, and EMA. They will be in charge of disaster preparedness. They are a single contact for all city departments, meaning that any emergency contact information, any emergency plans, they will, it will coordinate with, between him or her and all city departments to keep it under one, one binder. They will coordinate training with EMA and all other city departments. It will work with EMA on hazardous, hazard mitigation plans. They will also work on the fireside to, for any emergency plannings, emergency response, emergency coordination. And they will coordinate with all city departments on disaster response for tornadoes, ice storms, anything like that, and event planning within the city, your fireworks shows, Christmas parades, all of those kind of things. Most importantly, they will ensure compliance with the state and federal regulations. We are required to have hazard mitigation plans done. We are required to have our, our SOC stuff and, and all of those plans need to be done. And they will also research and apply for any applicable, applicable grants for both the Fire Department and anything that is EMA related for the city. The next request is going to be for a stationary loading system. The stationary loading system that we currently have in place has been used since I've, I started with the Fire Department. And basically, that's how it's up there is how it works. Somebody calls 911, the call goes into joint communications, it is processed. It has to be completely processed through all the Pro QA. Once that is done, the dispatcher has to determine which station, a single station or both stations, that need to go on this call. The tones are sent over the radio and units respond. Tones sent over the radio have little redundancy. If we lose a repeater, we lose an antenna, we have really no dispatch capabilities. We can, we can use our, our fire ground, but we can't talk from one side of the city to the other with it. So there is no redundancy if those, that system goes down. Calls must be completed through the Pro QA before notifications are sent to the Fire Department. That means they have to answer all of the questions that are on the Pro QA form, and it takes about a minute and a half to a minute and 45 seconds to get through that, depending on the dispatcher. During high call volume and, or multiple calls to 911, this, this delays a little bit. Human error happens. They get in a hurry, or there's so many things going on, they will dispatch the wrong station, or they will only dispatch one of the stations to a, to a house fire where both stations need to go. And it, it has happened. It happened a couple of weeks ago. So we are proposing to go to a Phoenix G2 alerting system. It's a big name for an automated dispatch. So basically, the way it works is when somebody places a 911 call, 911 answers. Once the 911 operator determines the type of call, which are one of the first few questions that they ask, and the address, which is another one of the first few, few questions that they ask, the system automatically then figures out the call from the input and the address from the input. The system then automatically knows what station or both stations, and it sends the alert out through our stations through an IP, through the IP address. So basically, the dispatcher can continue to stay on the call, taking the information, finding out information that needs to be sent to us, and this system is already alerting the fire stations. It talks to us, it does everything for the dispatcher. The dispatcher doesn't have to come off the phone. It does reduce the call to dispatch time. Some departments are, are saying that they're taking 30 to 45 seconds off of their actual time of 911 calls to the time that their trucks are rolling. I have talked to some other departments that they are saying that some of their medical calls are out the door in 15 seconds from the time that the 911 call hits the center, the time they're out, they're out the door. I can't guarantee that's going to work for us, but it will increase our, decrease our ability to get out the door from time of call. The system does dispatch to the stations through our internet IP address. It goes to both stations. The system does have a redundancy system that also allows the system to dispatch over our radios. So if we have an internet downtime or something to that effect, it can still go out to our radios and our trucks that aren't in the station will still also be able to get the dispatches. System sends notifications to cell phones and iPads through text notifications. There's also a system app that allows all of our members to have the system on their phone. They get the alerts to their phone. They get all the call information from, to their phones. The system has a number of options. Some of the options that we, we have opted out of, they can, it will flip open your, your computer screen and actually show the call volume on your computer screen, on TVs. They have pop-up boards you can put all over the station if you want. So we are currently working to reduce costs on the new fire station under construction to allow for this system to be placed and stay within budget and not have a budget overrun. This is proving difficult. We have looked at removing some items from the station. One of them is on the west side of the fire station, there's a, a concrete area where the barbecue grill and there's a patio type over there. We are considering removing the roof that goes over that as a cost-saving measure to try to put funds into, to this system. We are also looking at, there is supposed to be an eight-foot chain link fence that goes around our training facility. We're looking at making sure that we have padlocks to secure the building and removing that fence in an effort to make a cost saving so we can add this into the current building. We would still need to account for the cost for the system to go to headquarters. The funds that we are using for the new building cannot be used outside of that building. So we can't buy station speakers and the equipment boxes and put it at headquarters. It would have to go there. So we are still going to look at a budget, putting it in the budget to be able to account for that alerting system at the, at Fire Headquarters. Almost done. So we're also looking at replacing our brush truck. It is 23 years old. Or we can rehab the existing unit. There is quite a cost savings in rehabbing the existing unit. You still have a 23-year-old truck, but there is some options for doing that. And we're also asking to, to, again, for extra, for another set of extrication equipment. So we have one set of big tools. These are the heavy hydraulics. By having a set of second, a second set of tools on the other side of town, it eliminates a single fail point. So if one of those tools breaks down, goes bad, something happens to it, we break a tip, something like that, we no longer have a heavy set of spreaders or cutters. So we're really at a disadvantage then because it does take some time to get replacement parts. So we're trying to eliminate that single failure point. So planning for the future, this is the last slide, I promise. So planning for the, for the future, facilities. There's a growing need to expand the Fire Department. We are still looking at a North Sedalia Station, and we will be shortly looking at a South Sedalia Station. With businesses that are coming in, the expansion of the city, the need for the north side to have a fire station, city growth will dictate how, how we do that and what order we do it in. But we will also need personnel to do that, and they need to be added prior to the stations coming online. I can't take a, a crop of new firefighters and put them in a fire station without any kind of experienced leadership or anything like that. So we have to plan for, if we know that we want to extend the, the fire station to the north of the south, Fire Department to the north of the south, we need about two years of hiring those people, get them trained to go into that fire station. So what we'd like to look at is planning for the future is adding three additional personnel per shift. That basically gets you four years before you have to have a new fire station, where you can take those three people over the four years and add four people to each shift at a new fire station. You will also need to add another engine. Currently, it's a three-year waiting time from the time that that fire engine is ordered to the time that we get it. So we need to start looking for the future on expansion, fire trucks, and personnel, and those are all expensive. I do not have a question slide, but that is it. I forgot to add my question slide. So I will entertain any questions, or if anybody needs me to go back and review anything. It was a lot.
Does counsel have any questions?
I can't remember if, if we have an ordinance about people having a readable address on their home.
There isn't, there isn't, and it's by fire code.
And I know there are several homes that don't have an address, and I think it'd be very important for the Police Department and Fire Department. So I think we ought to somehow really push this issue to, for people to put addresses on their home because it, it'd be life saving.
Okay, it will go under community, a part of our community risk reduction, but we, we will work on it. There are a lot of things going on. Not to brag, but I've got some of the best drivers in, in the world, I think. They study all the time. They know addresses. They know 100 blocks. They're, they're very good at their job.
I don't know if we can actually force people.
You can by fire code. You can, you can force by fire code. You have to have, I believe, they're four inches reflecting, or they have to be a coarse contrasting color to the house. So if you have a white house, you have to have black letters. If you have a black house, you have to have white letters.
Makes sense.
So they have to be contrasting. It is in the fire code.
And maybe a, a better approach would be education to get people to understand why that's important, which that's something we can do through some community engagement.
We have worked through some plans. We're not ready, really ready. There's a lot of logistics that goes into some of the plans that we've brought up. We're not really ready to roll that out. It would be unfair to do that right now, but it is something that we can look at.
Does counsel have any other questions for, for Chief Irwin?
I actually have a couple. So you were requesting a Training Officer?
Yes, Training Chief.
Okay. How is your training completed now? What's the process? Are we calling someone in from an outside agency to complete these training courses?
So we, we do training on a number of ways. We do have outside agencies that come in and do training for us. We do have a set training schedule, but currently, right now, the Deputy Fire Chief is in charge of training and getting those training hours done and setting up that program. Takes a lot of time out of his daily schedule to make sure that that's being done. And we also rely heavily on online training, Target Solutions, those kind of things. With this Training Officer, I would like to remove or work away from online training. It is very non-personable. It's very easy to put up a video, click start, go do what you need to do, come back, answer the questions. So it's not very fulfilling as a training. It, it fills a need, but it is not very educational.
And is there an expense for the online training?
There, do we pay for Target Solutions? What is it? It's, it's a, it's a, it's, it's less than, I think, $3,000. Possibly $5,000 that we pay for the subscription to Target Solution for all 49 members of the Fire Department.
Okay. You also asked for a fire mechanic.
We did last year. We are not asking for it. We, we have, we have worked out a very generous deal with Peterbilt. Thank you. It eluded me, that they are working on our trucks and doing a very fine job. A lot of our trucks are still newer, our newest engine and our new ladder. They are under warranty, so felt is coming down if we have any issues with those currently. So at the current time, we don't necessarily need a mechanic anymore. I'd like to have one, but we, we can't justify it right now.
I have two more for you.
Okay.
You had some inspection numbers, the numbers of failures on inspections. Do you have any number on how many of them have been moved into compliance since violations?
I do not. I can get it for you. I didn't pull that. I, I can get that for you, but I do not have that readily available. No, it wasn't something that I pulled off of, off the, our reporting software.
All right, this is my last one.
Promise?
Yes. The brush truck, the rehab, the rehab on the truck versus a new one. Do you know what the, the rehab extends the truck for how long versus a new one?
I, I, so the current brush truck that we have has some body damage. It has a lot of wear. It's meant to go off-road in the fields, and so it's been beat up. I don't know how long it would extend it, probably five, 10 years. We're looking at lifting it a little bit, redoing the entire suspension and, and basically drivetrain of the truck and adding it, putting a flatbed on it. We currently have nowhere to put any of the blowers or any of the equipment. So basically, they ride in the bed. So if it's weather out, like we have it out now, you know, we put a plow on it to push snow. All the equipment in the back of it is getting snowed on. So we'll have compartments to put in on the side of it. I can't give you in how long. It, it will kick the can down the road about five to 10 years, I would say. It's still a 23-year-old truck. We are not planning on replacing the motor, but I'm not sure what you can get a V8 motor for these days. I haven't done that. Good?
That's it. That's all I got.
We'll move to Councilwoman Foster.
Hit us with a lot of stuff.
I did. I did. That's why I'm always glad to go before the Police Department. So for my dream list, um, uh, let's see. So the ladder truck that we just got, your newest one that we're going to do, the pushing on 11th with $1.68 million. The fire engine that's coming this, later this year, is just under a million dollars. Fire engine that's coming this, later this year, um, is just under a million dollars, $997,000. It goes up five to seven percent every year. And it seems like the time extends out longer and longer. For a new brush truck, personnel, you're probably looking somewhere to the tune of about six, $700,000. For, that's with training chiefs, um, EMA chiefs, everything that I put on there. Roughly.
All right. Do you have any great ideas on how we can come up with that and pay for all that? Cause we, we love to protect. We want, that's the
Well, I, I understand that. I understand that. So this is where I, I have said in the past, I'm glad that it is you making the decisions and not me. Cause I don't know how you guys could, can, can sit and make these decisions over each department that's going to come up here and give you the list of wants and needs and then find the happy medium to do that. I'm not sure how the city, um, continues to support the fire department and everything else. Cause everything that we have is getting more and more expensive. I understand that. I'm not sure how the city expands fire stations and adds personnel. Uh, I'm not sure what the number is, but I believe a few years ago, personnel costs were somewhere around 70% of our total budget. Is that an accurate number?
It's higher than that.
Okay. So, so it's even more than 70% of our tire, entire gross proceeds that we get from the city. I'm not sure how you, we continue adding staff. We keep, continue adding stations. We can keep continuing adding police officers and all of those things. I'm not sure how we do it. It is a juggling act at best. I will say this, and it's not going to be a popular, it won't be popular. But the city of Sedalia is probably the largest fire department in the state that isn't supported by either a property or a sales tax. Clinton, Warrensburg, Jeff City, Kansas City, they all have either a property tax or a sales tax that goes directly to their fire departments. We do not have that. All funds come for the fire department come from general revenue. I am not advocating for a tax. I'm just saying that I've said this before, we are too small to be big and too big to be small. And at some point we're going to have to grow and it's going to take either a fatality fire or something like that that is going to push our hand to having, needing a fire station somewhere else other than where we have them right now. Probably not the answer you wanted. I'm sorry.
Any other questions, counsel?
I'd just like to say thank you, uh, for putting it into the planning for the future. Time and time again, we have said, and we will continue, I will continue to say, get something north of the railroad tracks here in Sedalia. There's nothing there and you're, you're, you've already said that there's growth and there's going to be growth on that side of town.
There's already growth happening on the north side of the railroad tracks, ma'am. I, I don't disagree, but again, the, the costs is with everything that is facing the city and equipment and personnel costs and all of those things. It is a juggling match. And again, I will say, I'm, I'm glad I don't have to make that decision for you guys. I don't envy your, your decision.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Okay. Much like item one in this committee, chief of police, David Woolery will provide a police department strategic planning.
Good evening, mayor and council. In West Point leadership training, one of the things that, uh, instructor always said was try not to look at challenges as problems, but as opportunities. So I would like to thank you for this opportunity to get up and do public speaking again. I truly enjoy it. Good news is I don't have to be perfect. I only have to be better than chief Erwin. So that's, uh, that's my goal. Tonight we are going to be going over the Sedalia Police Department 2027 strategic plan, which is an overview of the strategic initiatives for enhancing community safety and department efficiency. We're going to cover first the 2026 plan updates, basically what we covered, what we've been doing this year, what we spent on the last year's strategic plan and where those initiatives are now. And then we're going to go over the 2027 plan initiatives. So last year, uh, one of the things that the, the council approved was our market wage adjustment. And currently our staffing is at 47 officers. We expect to lose two to the highway patrol. They're in the process and, uh, for everything we've got doing, doing well. That will probably happen in December. We have one officer currently in the academy now in Warrensburg. And we just had our last testing. We have four candidates that we have given conditional offers to and are slated to go to the academy, uh, starting in January. So having four officers start is the largest number that we've had out of one testing in a long time, which indicates to me that the market wage adjustment for recruitment has helped along with our other efforts. And you know, the other part of that was the retention of the officers that we have. And even though we are losing, potentially losing few to the state, that was something we kind of forecasted could happen because they are, they are paying very well and, and there's some opportunities there that they wanted to look at. However, throughout the agency, I can tell you from the feedback from the officers that they were very appreciative of what you all did last year. And I mean, the, the, the wage adjustment is good, but it also showed the appreciation that the council has for the work that they do. So I want to thank you all. Before I go any further, that was, that was very beneficial for our agency. So thank you. And also on the retention side, a couple of things that we have initiated at the police department over this year is we started an internship program where officers that are working in a certain bureau, whether it's patrol bureau, if they want to go to investigations for a month, they can do a month internship and kind of get out of their sandbox a little bit, move around, see what that's about and see if that's an area that they would like to work towards going. So that has opened up throughout every area in our agency that they can go to. And we started that in November and immediately an officer wanted to go up and work with the crime resolution unit. So he went and worked with the crew for a month and has just rotated back to patrol. So they've already started using that. And another thing that we have started is officers are allowed to work out during shift for 30 minutes. It's not a long period as long as calls allow, but that's about the longest we can do without calls backing up. We definitely don't want it to, uh, to affect their ability to respond, but it gives them a chance to, to get some exercise, work on fitness and de-stress a little bit. And that has also been popular on the retention side throughout moving through the agency. So moving along, I'm going to start with the community engagement and community engagement. This is just a small sampling of opportunities for us to have personal interaction with our community. We do more events than we even try to track. So like, uh, chief Erwin was, was saying on, they were able to count how many they do. We don't actually count them. We just, we take every opportunity, uh, to be part of our community and build those relationships and trust. And you can see some of the, the ones here. And again, this is a sampling of, of what it is. And on the other side of that is a community education that we've done throughout the year. And the community education are opportunities where we can educate citizens and we try very hard to hit citizens of all ages. So the citizens police academy is for, uh, adults, the drone unit, all ages, canine unit demos, all ages. Dare and Dare Camp, obviously for the, for younger kids. Uh, active shooter site assessment and safety, uh, teaching businesses and working with businesses on setting up safe sites. Uh, the alcohol compliance, uh, work thing that we did, uh, traffic safety awareness and mock crash. That's for high school kids. Targeted not just for Sedalia, but for, uh, all surrounding communities as well. Senior fraud and finance abuse, and then immigration integration, which is something newer we've been doing for a couple of years. And, and that is for, uh, uh, classes for folks from Ukraine and Russia that are moving here on integrating into American society. So we do a, a block with them on teaching them about law enforcement here in our community and basically how to respond and how to act if you are, uh, stopped by a, by an officer or dealing with law enforcement. So working on the projects that were funded on, for this year's budget, the, uh, the Teradyne Gurka, the special response vehicle. This was, uh, a vehicle to help keep our officers safe in some of their most dangerous situations and raise our effectiveness in public safety. That is well underway. Those are actually older pictures. Um, we got some newer ones today and it's, it's coming along very well. And we expect that to be, uh, delivered mid-January to very early February. The Sonics transcription service. And if you don't remember exactly what this is, this is a system that transcribes video conversations to a written report format. So if we do a two hour interview or interrogation, instead of the officer going and watching every interrogate, every couple of seconds, stopping and typing out what is said, this program will take all of that voice recording and put it to a, to a text format and have all the conversations. It splits them up and it saves hours and hours and hours of officers working on, on having to do that. We've had this into effect for a good part of the year. Our personnel really love this program. And again, the cost effective, it's $200 a year and then $5 an hour, which saves us a lot of money on, on time and expense through, uh, through man hours. Departmentware, the FTO software, that's for a field training officer. That we have, we have gotten, it's purchased and we have actually, uh, the system is live and we have backfilled historical data on there. So the field training program is one of our higher liability areas because the field training program, the function is to ensure when we hire an officer, that that officer is adequately trained, ensures that we adequately access their capability. And if need be, we adequately, adequately remove that officer if, if they're not able to perform the job. But we need to ensure that we must have all the proper documentation and information to reduce our liability and to treat the employee fairly, giving them every opportunity for success. And this software is, is helping us do that. So we have a, when the officer gets out of the academy in December, he will be the first one to actually start using this. We'll be using his information live in here, but we can compare his matrix, matrices with the last five that we have preloaded. So if he's performing a function, we can look at how they performed and you can immediately see whether they're better or worse. And it, it does a lot of, uh, a lot of charting and training that will give us immediate feedback on how they're doing. So, and again, we're just, just getting ready to start utilizing that one. And the installation of the additional lockers that was approved, we got 10 lockers that, uh, are now installed, seven in the, the men's locker room and three of the women to help for future staffing needs. And that's actually one area that we have, uh, we have some extras now that, that we can grow into. That is, uh, purchased and done. And the traffic unit and accident trends. As we, I've discussed before, we have a very close partnership with MoDOT. And this year by working with MoDOT, we've got grant funding for 800 hours of driving while intoxicated and hazardous moving violation, uh, time of, of working the streets in Sedalia to reduce those incidents. We've gotten over $40,000 in grant funded overtime for those initiatives, resulting in 1,417 traffic stops, over 225 driving, impaired driving arrests. We also have sent several of our traffic officers to professional development conferences. That's all grant funded. Purchased a couple of radar units through that grant this year. And this is a very important number. Since 2023, we have reduced our crashes by 17%, which is a significant number, uh, in our community. And that's something that we're very proud of with our traffic unit. Our traffic unit, all of our officers are dedicated to reducing and eliminating crashes and injuries on our roadways. And we maintain one of the leading traffic units, uh, for DWI in the state. Our traffic unit members are leaders in education, results and partnerships throughout the state as well. And while working with, uh, federal partners and our state partners, we've adopted the safe systems approach, which basically breaks down to safe people, safe vehicles, safe responses, safe infrastructure and safe speeds. Also, while doing all of this, our traffic officers have been assigned to shifts, taking calls like everybody else because they don't have this, haven't had the staffing to have a dedicated traffic unit. So with the Ford, if they graduate the academy, my goal and my hope is we aren't losing more people and we will have the staffing to keep the patrol shifts staffed and have a dedicated traffic unit that can focus on problem areas within our, within our town. Specifically speed, parking, hazardous moving violations, illegal vehicles on the roadway and time and place problems. So as complaints come in and we identify areas at a certain time, at certain places that there are problems, we can focus on those and solve those problems and, and make our communities even better, which is our ultimate goal. Are there any questions so far?
Any questions, counsel?
Our live nine one and drone is first responders program. We do have that in operation. We just got the live nine one one, uh, within the last month or so. Working with, uh, Pettis County Joint Communication, we had to have a, have an MOU with them and, and get everything in place. And that is now up and running. And if you don't remember exactly what that is, the live nine one and drones as first responders are two separate systems. The drones as first responders allows us to drop, to fly a drone autonomously to incident scenes. And live nine one one allows us to hear emergency calls as they come in to dispatch. And these two systems work together. We presented this, I presented this in last year's budget and we did get partially funded. We had, uh, we funded one DFR advice that went, device that went on an existing drone. And then we got six, uh, terminals for the live nine one one. And, uh, that is, that has been very, very effective also. That allows the real time audio of nine one one streamed to officers. And officers can respond quicker, safer and better informed. Also has a lot, a mapping function that I'm going to show you here in a minute. And then the drone launch for real time on scene information. And we're one of the very few agencies in the state who are leveraging this technology right now. And that was the case last year and it's still the case this year. Fingers crossed.
The DFR program was a strategic plan initiative for 2026 approved by council. DFRs are drone refers as first responder program that started by applying
There's an IT guy when you need him.
For some waivers through the FAA to allow us to fly beyond visual line of sight. This is achieved by using Paladin Watchtower software and the XT module ten percent part. This allows us citywide coverage within six minutes flying from the rooftop of the PD. It's an autonomous flight. There's no traffic or stop signs that would interfere with our flights. And it gets us on scene faster. This allows us to gather information for officer safety and evidence collection.
Live nine one one for the first time ever gives officers an opportunity to hear the conversation between dispatch and a nine one one caller. The call will come in, the dispatchers take it, they complete their pro Q and A, uh, protocols, and then they dispatch an officer. That, that's a delay between when the officer knows about the call and then can start, uh, uh, heading that way to the location of the call. We can go there before the dispatcher's completed their pro Q and A protocols. And we'll hear the emotion and the tone, um, and the nuances that are going on between the dispatcher and the caller that, uh, we have not been able to hear before. So with that information, the officers arrive on scene better prepared to handle whatever the situation is. And the live nine one one interface has a, a dual mapping system. One map shows a zoomed in location of where the, where the call is taking place. And the other, uh, the other map has a wide view of the city relative to where the officer is, to where the call is. We can be strategic about going in route sooner. It gets us on scene sooner. And then we can also preemptively launch a drone and we can have a drone on scene somewhere, which gives us some real time information about what's unfolding with the call. The live nine one one is a benefit for the officer to get real time information about what's happening. And that enables the department to better serve the community. There's been several incidents recently where we've heard an emergency call go off through live nine one one. And we proactively launched the drone to get to the location quickly. And actually beat responding officers who are in patrol cars to the scene. One good example of that recently is a group of kids were home alone and they heard noise at the back door that they thought was somebody breaking into the house.
What's the address of your emergency?
I, I don't know.
You don't know? Okay. I think I have you located on my nine one one. Tell me exactly what happened.
There, someone is knocking on our door, but my mom's not home. I think they're trying to break in.
Okay. We're going to get some help dispatch. I'm just going to have a few more questions for you. Okay? And where is the person now?
They're, they're at my back door, but I don't know where they're at right now. I didn't see them. I didn't see them, I'm too scared. When they started banging on our door, we all ran back to my room.
When we heard this Live 911 call go off, we preemptively launched a drone and sent it to the location. And we used the drone to clear the backyard and the back door, uh, and the, and the back windows and so forth to show that nobody was actually breaking in the house. And the drone was on scene for about a minute to a minute and a half before responding officers and patrol cars actually arrived. So that's one good example where hearing the calls as they occur real time and then using the drone proactively and sending it to the incident location uh, can provide good on-scene intelligence, uh, to get a, a bird's eye view of what's happening.
So when I proposed that last year, there was a lot of confusion, it seemed, in the public that they thought that drones were going to replace officers. I'm hoping that we demonstrate that drones do not replace officers responding to scenes. It is a supplement to the officers responding to scenes. Um, and that's, uh, we are not actually requesting to expand this program this year. Uh, last year, we had asked for the, the two units that would be autonomous on a, on a roof of the fire station and, and, uh, perhaps the police department or the, uh, or the East Fire Station, where they could, where they could fly out and respond quicker. Uh, we would actually like to evaluate the efficiency and effectiveness of this longer. And then maybe whenever the other fire station is, is completed, partner with the fire department again and, and maybe look at that then. But we do have them up and running. We've got good results from, from both and, uh, that's something that we'll want to, we'll want to work towards in the future. Another example of, of the DFR that we had recently was, uh, we had a report of a train derailment at, uh, on Engineer. And, uh, officers responded, fire department responded. I initially started to respond and Commander Elwood was already going out to the roof and launching the drone. So I actually stayed with him and, and we, and command staff watched the drone deploy. He deployed from here and we could immediately see the train on the tracks. And from the drone, because you know, there's a lot of area on the tracks that you cannot see, uh, what, when you're in a car, the, the intersections don't match. But the drone could see the train on the tracks all the way through. Um, we're already on scene, we actually saw a fire department responding down a side, uh, down Hancock, I believe, to hit Third Street and go to it. So the drone was on scene before any other unit and had flown the whole length of the tracks. So there are a lot of utilizations of the drones for first responders that, that we've already gotten to use. And, uh, and it's been, it's been very positive. And I think it's been a good investment for us. So the end of our review of this year, uh, total calls for service for the police department. And this, this again, this is old, um, this is probably a couple of, two to three weeks old. 31,702 calls for service, uh, cases assigned to detectives, 340. Um, but a lot of the cases, because we have rotating detectives, we have detectives that are now back on the road. So they're actually handling a lot of those or that number would be higher. And total arrests, 1,729, and then total traffic stops so far this year, 6,834. Any questions on last year's, or I move on?
Any questions, Council?
Okay. Moving on to the 2027, uh, strategic overview. The Graykey forensic device acquisition. We currently have a Parabin, uh, phone recovery system, which is limited in its scope and in its ability. So basically what these do is if we take a phone as evidence and we want to get evidence off of that phone, these systems hopefully allow us into the phone to get the, to get the evidence from there. If we have a case that is serious or the phone is locked, which is almost all the time, we don't use our current system because we can't. Uh, Graykey allows us instant access to even locked devices. So if we get a search warrant for a phone, Graykey can bypass the, the locked devices and get into the phone. This allows for faster digital forensics investigations and most importantly, uh, justice or safety. An example of that is, say we have an adult in the home that we have, uh, probable cause or we believe that he's looking up child pornography on his devices. If we get a search warrant for the phone, we take the phone, now we have to take it to the Secret Service and we're weeks or months before we can get that information back. So we still don't have any evidence that this person who is likely in the home of children is, is doing that. So we have to wait until we get that evidence back before we can move forward. So we potentially have a predator in the home for, for some time that, uh, before we can move forward with it. So this Graykey would allow, uh, again, us to get into locked devices and obtain that information a lot faster. But don't take it from me.
People use cell phones nowadays for everything. I mean, even when they pay bills, everything, so. And people that are committing crimes, typically they talk about it before the crime, talk about it during sometimes, talk about it after it sometimes. So, uh, phones are a very important tool for cases that we work, uh, to get, I have to get, uh, evidence and stuff off of them, because it would be huge.
So when someone commits a crime and they know there's evidence on their device, they're not going to be willing to give you that passcode generally speaking.
What eight or nine out of 10 phones are probably, I mean, we can't get into because they're all have a PIN, have a PIN lock and they're not able to tell us what it is most of the time.
Then we have to obtain a search warrant, drive it to Kansas City, get to the Secret Service, wait for weeks, months, however long it takes the Secret Service to get around to doing the forensic download and we have to go pick it back up again.
You're, you're going up there dropping it off, you're spending, you know, half a day to a day. By the time you drive up there, find the traffic, because it's the secret service locations downtown and then get back, just drop off and do the same routine, you know, a month or several weeks later to pick them back up. You know, that's very time consuming. And when you get that house, you can get those, that evidence back quickly, which may lead you to stuff that, you know, if you learn, uh, six weeks down the road, it's no longer going to be relevant or going to be anything that you can go out there actively pursue.
Yeah, if we can get, we can get fresh information about where a stolen gun is, we can get a search warrant and go get it. But if we get it six weeks, month, two later, it's pointless at that point.
Where Graykey will just put everything in a very user-friendly format so that you can just look at everything right there.
Our current software that we have was just not, 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 uh, not good enough to get into these phones, devices. Graykey is, my understanding is the leader in getting into unlocked devices right now. Get the best, uh, technology that's available.
It will pay for itself in cases that we can solve with information that we can use.
Uh, the next area that we want, uh, to focus on is in-car camera replacement. Our existing cameras are at end of life and they need newer technology. The, uh, the Panasonic product that we use have stopped producing the parts to the cameras that we have now in almost all of our patrol cars. We, uh, lost three cameras this year and we were able to basically cobble parts together from existing cameras that we, uh, that we aren't using or able to get those parts from, from the company to keep them running. But it is coming to the end of life. You guys might remember this year, we got the Blue Shield Grant, which was $50,000 and we spent that to purchase eight of the cameras. We have 13 vehicles total that have car cameras. I know the math isn't mathing there. We had two existing already in our, in our, uh, in our fleet. So we had two that were already new cameras. We purchased eight, so we need to purchase three more that, uh, to keep that, keep that going. Okay, and then the Tyler Cloud Records Management. So just a little background on, on Tyler, that's the software solution that we have. And the police department controls pretty much all the software that keeps public safety and the county operating. It, all, all the county agencies use Tyler one way or another. So Sedalia Police, Sedalia Fire, PCAD uses Tyler. That controls our dispatching, it controls our report writing. All those are, are Tyler technologies. And we currently, uh, our current MSP, which is our records part of Tyler that we have is over 15 years old and ultimately will no longer be supported by Tyler. We don't have a timeframe of when they won't support it anymore. But the Tyler's been pushing us to move to the cloud system and, and not use external, our own servers and use the cloud. And, and that's where agencies across the country using Tyler are going. They, uh, Tyler Technologies currently utilize 15 internal city of Sedalia servers to operate our software. So we have 15 servers that, uh, that we use for Tyler alone. And the server hardware and software has to be updated this year, which will be a separate expense if we do not move to the cloud. We're going to have to replace those 15 servers. And if we do go to the cloud solution with Tyler, we will get the following benefits. It will enable reliable software upgrades with current technology. Our current records platform has not been updated, has not had updated features in years because they don't support it anymore. They haven't cut it off, but they don't, uh, create new supports and new updates. So we've been, we've been existing for years off of, uh, off of the old system. Currently Sergeant Comfort and IT staff are required to virtually escort Tyler through our servers on all updates, supports and repairs. So it, it is fairly labor-intensive and time-intensive to do that every time that has to happen. And the reality is Sergeant Comfort is pivotal in maintaining emergency services software in Pettis County. So if we move to the iCloud or the, the cloud system, it would greatly reduce our administrative responsibilities because Tyler would then have the, uh, ability and would perform all of the maintenance. If, if our Tyler systems went down, we could contact Tyler and say, hey, our, our system's down. And they would do the repairs and they would do the fixing on it and, and correcting and getting us back up. So, and if Sergeant Comfort retires or isn't able, able to perform the maintenance, keeping our software operational the way that we're currently doing it will become extremely difficult to do. Um, I talked with the, uh, the IT director about this today and I think it's safe to say he is in agreement with me that this is a step we are going to need to take at some point. So, uh, yeah, I, I don't think it's going to get any cheaper than it is now. So, um, I definitely think we need to move towards this. Also, going on the cloud would help with, uh, redundancy. So all of our servers if, uh, are in one location, if a tornado, fire or malware took out our servers, we would not be able to dispatch, we would not be able to write reports, keep records or any, uh, or recover any of our existing records. So it would be a significant, uh, issue for us to have to deal with. And it would, uh, going to the cloud would greatly reduce the potential of any of those losses. So that's a lot to that one. Any questions on that?
Any question?
Yep, two more. E-ticketing, uh, license upgrade. So currently whenever, uh, we, we do, uh, we write a ticket and we can, officers can either scan the license or manually enter information in on a, on a handheld device. The, uh, the e-ticketing license upgrade would allow our officers to actually utilize the MDT terminal that's in the car. So if I stop, uh, the mayor for speeding, he wouldn't do. But if I did and I ran his license, I would get his, uh, his Missouri uniform law enforcement system. All the information about the mayor would come up on here. All the information would come up about his vehicle. I can copy and paste that information with this and that information would automatically autofill the summons that they would get. Then I would just be able to manually enter in the rest of the information. But manually entering in the rest of the information on the computer terminal is a lot better and more user-friendly than trying to, we'd say fat fingery on the, on the little device. Uh, checking with records, they have to correct about 75% I think of the tickets that go through from, from an error or another. So it is fairly time-intensive to do that. It would definitely help with that and, and make the whole stop shorter. So the citizen wouldn't be there as long, the officer wouldn't be there as long. They're going to issue a summons, it's, it's quicker, it's easier and, and out the door they go. It's our last video.
Currently we do our e-ticketing on a Brazos secret machine, it's a handheld ticket machine. Uh, putting information in sometimes becomes cumbersome whenever we, with the window size and finger size and the small letters. Or if we can go to the licensing on mobile, everything's integrated to where the information's more accurate. We can speed up traffic stops, making the duration a lot smaller. Um, in, in helping the community, getting officers back on the, the road faster, making people more happy that we're not holding them in traffic stops. It's, it's just better all around for the community.
So the, uh, the Live 911 additional licenses, we talked about the Live 911, uh, system earlier. We got six licenses last year and just in the short time we've been able to use it, we have found that to be a, a very good utility for us. Again, the officer, I would like 10 additional licenses so I could have the Live 911 in every police car. So when an officer is out proactively working, 911 rings, the officer can hear that call come in live as, uh, as we talked about before, can hear the voice inflection, you can hear what's being said, the spontaneous statements. And they can immediately start going to where that is because dispatch has to go through their own process, which can take one to two minutes. So I checked, I came in, uh, Sunday and was speaking with the patrol shift and asking how they like it. And they, they like it very much. They said that they, uh, they've already had incidents where they're on scene before the call even comes out. And, and the ones that they're not on scene for, they're on their way and they're a lot closer. And I mean, you all know that time is essential in this business. So this is, uh, this has been something that's been very effective already and I think has, has wonderful potential. Uh, the fire chief had, had talked about kind of an early warning system, which I, I think that there is, there's great utility in that and getting emergency services there faster. And dispatch isn't slow, but they have to get their information as well to, to try and get to us. And if officers can get that live, then it's all the better. It also helps us create a game plan of how we're going to go when we get there and, and know more of what's going on. We're not relying on someone else to get us secondhand information. And last but not least, um, I talked about the, the new storage and training facility. Where, uh, our existing building, the, the Quonset Hut is pre-World War II, I believe you said, Jack. Um, so it, it, it is, uh, I know that the city has, has a lot of things to cover. I will, I will say that we do want a new storage and, and training facility. Um, you know, the underneath we would use for evidence and equipment that we have with four bays and then above, we would have, uh, it would be designed for our special response team entry house or, or whatever training needs we would convert that into. Um, it would be beneficial for us. However, I do want to keep this on your radar and I'll tell you that it is not a critical purchase at this time. We are still functioning with what we have. But at, at some point, we are going to need, uh, a new remedy to the, to the Quonset Hut that we have. And if anyone ever wants to take a tour of that with me, just give me a call. I'd be more than happy to, uh, to take you over and, and let you see it so you can kind of get an idea of, uh, what I'm talking about. So just to recap, uh, the strategic plan moving forward for this year, the Graykey forensic device processing, e-ticketing license upgrade for our mobile, uh, data terminals, Tyler Cloud for records management, the Live 911 additional licenses, replace the Quonset Hut and in-car camera replacement. Any questions?
Council, have any question?
Um, are you asking for these things in this order?
No, um, no, I'm not.
Anyone else? You go back to the Graykey slide.
You betcha.
Okay, so on the 25 to 30 devices per year.
Yes.
Is that just an estimate of how much we're going to use it? Or is that like some type of subscription service where we're limited to doing 25 to 30 devices per year?
Both, you, you buy off of a, a subscription service. So, but it, but it fits both. I mean, we have taken phones to the Secret Service about 25 to 30 times this year, if I'm understanding that correctly, Commander Elwood. And then the, uh, the service that we would want to be purchasing, I think, is at 25 uses. So we would, we would still pick and choose, um, but it gives us the flexibility to do that. If it's a, if it's a case that we need immediate for, then yes. If it's a case that it's If it's a case that it's locked, but it, but we don't have the urgency, we could still drive that to, uh, the secret service. And if we, if we, we get it and we're like, it would be worth the money to get some more services out of it, then you know, that we can look at that later. But again, I don't want to buy a package that we may not need.
Yeah, but that is something, if you need to use it more, if you end up using it more, you can go ahead and purchase that.
Yes.
Bandwidth to do that. Okay.
Sure.
That was my question. Anybody else? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Okay. Our third and final item on the Public Safety Committee is the city is completing final steps towards transferring management of the Frozen Firefighters Retirement Fund to Missouri Loggers. Following the council's twenty-twenty-two vote to move all fire department personnel into loggers, this transition does not change the members' benefits or reduce any retirees' payments. It strictly changes who manages the frozen plan. Currently, the firefighters' retirement fund is managed in-house by the city and funded at approximately seventy percent compared to loggers' ninety-two-point-three percent funded status. Uh, loggers provide stronger, long-term financial stability through disciplined investment practices, diversified portfolios and oversight by statewide board of trustees. This shift represents a significant improved long-term management structure for an already frozen pension fund. I would like to invite up Chief Erwin and HR Director Shannon Truly to give you a little more information about this.
Hey, nice to see you guys again. So what you guys are voting on and approving this evening, um, actually started late twenty-one. Um, with the fire department looking to try to move from its current legacy plan, which was a fixed income or fixed retirement system, um, into the logger system. At that time, the fire department, its active members voted on wanting to transition into loggers. So that was done in twenty-twenty-two, the current, the, the old legacy plan was frozen. So all benefits are frozen, there's no more funds going into that. It's working off of its own, um, its own funding or its own fund balance that it is drawing interest off of. So what you're voting on tonight basically completes the circle for this. So all current members of the Sedalia Fire Department are in the loggers program. Uh, we started that in twenty-twenty-two. No other additional firefighters will go into the legacy plan. And, um, once those members retire out and as they move on and they pass away, hopefully for in fifty years, um, uh, that plan will eventually will go away. So what this is doing is, is that it's taking the, the, the legacy plan that we are currently managing, which is, um, it does have a pension board, um, I'm on the board. Um, there are members of the department that are on the board and we have a retired member that's on the board that make the changes. We do the actuarials, we, we pay all those bills, we, we do all of that. Um, but this vote will do, will take that away, move our, our funds into the loggers funds and let them manage it. It changes nothing on benefits, it changes nothing. Basically, it only changes who the check is coming from. And there is a possibility, um, depending on how the loggers fund goes, that there could be a COLA given to retirees or their spouses that, that have passed away or their survivors. Currently with our current retirement fund, it's, I think it's happened once, I, once, very, very, very long time ago, it does not happen often. Loggers has told us that if the fund does well, there is that possibility that even retirees can get, get a, a COLA, um, in future years. So it benefits both the current employees and those that have retired and those are surviving spouses. Um, and just for some extra clarification, um, the active members voted on this in twenty-twenty-two. Um, we actually had another vote of the members that are part of the plan that are active as well as retirees and their spouses. And we had an overwhelming support of allowing this to move through to loggers. I believe fifty-something votes. Forty-six votes and we only had one no vote. So it was ninety-nine percent of the, of all of the members that are currently of this plan to move forward into loggers.
And just to clarify also, Chief, on the COLAs for the retirees, I looked that up and the last time was in two thousand eight that the retirees actually got a COLA, so.
Oh. And there are some survivors that are getting like two hundred and thirteen dollars a month, as, because that's what the pension was back in the day. So there has been no cost of living for those, those surviving spouses or retirees.
Loggers currently has a funding rate of about ninety-two. So the hope is of course by moving them over, the pension plan over to that to be funded, that it'll of course, again, go up to hopefully nineties, uh, ninety percent funded or more.
Counsel, have any questions for the members of staff?
It, this has no additional cost to the city or taxpayers, correct?
Any other questions? All right. Having heard none, I'll go ahead and, uh, we have two bills in relation to this matter. We'll go and call for the reading of bill number twenty-two-five dash one ninety-nine.
Bill number twenty-two-five one ninety-nine. An ordinance deleting Article Three of Chapter Forty of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sedalia, Missouri, entitled Firefighters Retirement Fund and adding a new Article Three of Chapter Forty, entitled Firefighters Retirement Fund.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion in second for the second reading of bill number twenty-two-five dash one ninety-nine. Do I have any counsel discussion regarding that motion? Having heard none, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty-two-five one ninety-nine. An ordinance deleting Article Three of Chapter Forty of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sedalia, Missouri, entitled Firefighters Retirement Fund and adding a new Article Three of Chapter Forty, entitled Firefighters Retirement Fund.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion in second for the final passage of bill number twenty-two-five dash one ninety-nine. Do I have any counsel discussion regarding that bill that is on the floor? Having heard none, roll call please.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes. I will now call for the reading of bill number twenty-two-five dash two hundred.
Bill number twenty-two-five two hundred. An ordinance approving and accepting a joint agreement by and between the City of Sedalia, Missouri and the Board of Trustees of the Missouri Local Government Employees Retirement System Loggers for the transition of the administration of the Sedalia Firefighters Retirement Fund into loggers.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion in second for the second reading of bill number twenty-two-five dash two hundred. Do I have any counsel discussion regarding that motion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty-two-five two hundred. An ordinance approving and accepting a joint agreement by and between the City of Sedalia, Missouri and the Board of Trustees of the Missouri Local Government Employees Retirement System Loggers for the transition of the administration of the Sedalia Firefighters Retirement Fund into loggers.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion in second for the final passage of bill number twenty-two-five dash two hundred. Do I have any counsel discussion regarding that bill? Having heard none, roll call please.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes and thank you Chairman Scribner. Up next, we have Public Works Chairman, Chairwoman Franklin, you have the floor.
We have three items this evening. The first one, the city was awarded Missouri Department of Tourism Fiscal Year Twenty-Six Marketing Platform Development Grant totaling sixty thousand with a required thirty thousand local match for development and installation of new wayfinding signage throughout Sedalia. Council previously approved both the grant agreement and associated budget amendment. As part of procurement process, Public Works issued IFB twenty-two-six zero-zero-seven, seeking qualified vendor design, fabricate and install the signs. No bids were received by August twelfth, twenty-twenty-five deadline to ensure the project can move forward within the grant cycle ending June thirty, twenty-twenty-six. Staff directly solicited pricing from vendors after the IFB closed with no responses. Yonker Contracting was the only firm to provide a quote proposing the cost of five thousand per sign for complete design, fabrication and installation. This pricing would allow installation of twelve wayfinding signs across the city's right-of-way, aligning with both the grant deliverables and approved project scope. Public Works staff and the Sedalia Convention and Visitors Bureau jointly recommend approval of the Yonkers Contracting Quote and Contract, enabling the city to meet the grant deadline, avoid further procurement delays and successfully deliver the tourism-driven community enhancement project.
All right, call for the reading of bill number twenty-two-five dash two oh one.
Bill number twenty-two-five two oh one. An ordinance authorizing agreement for wayfinding signage.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion in second for the second reading of bill number twenty-two-five dash two oh one. Do I have any counsel discussion regarding that bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty-two-five two oh one. An ordinance authorizing agreement for wayfinding signage.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion in second for the final passage of bill number twenty-two-five dash two oh one. Do I have any counsel discussion regarding it? You mean heard none, roll call please.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes.
Next, the Utilities Department seeks approval to proceed with replacing improperly sized wiring and breaker server, serving high-service pumps number four and five at the water filtration plant. The pumps were upgraded in recent years, but the existing wiring cannot fully operate, operational capacity, limiting the system's ability to reliably meet growing water demand. A formal invitation for bids was issued resulting in three bids ranging from forty-one thousand three hundred eighty-eight dollars to ninety-nine thousand nine hundred seventy-two dollars. Staff recommend awarding the project to RS Electric Cooperation, the low bid bidder of forty-one thousand three hundred eighty-eight based on the price prior strong performance on city projects.
Call for the reading of bill number twenty-two-five dash two zero two.
Bill number twenty-two-five two oh two. An ordinance approving and accepting a proposal for wiring and breakers at the water filtration plant.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion in second for the second reading of bill number twenty-two-five dash two zero two. Do I have any counsel discussion regarding that bill?
This RS Electric Corporation is someone that we've worked with before?
Yes, we have.
Okay.
Any further counsel discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty-two-five two oh two. An ordinance approving and accepting a proposal for wiring and breakers at the water filtration plant.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion in second for the final passage of twenty-two-five dash two zero two. Do I have any counsel discussion regarding that bill? Having heard none, roll call please.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes.
And the final thing, the Utility Department is requesting approval to increase the contract authorization for Drop Collaborative, formerly Chem HEC Environmental Consulting, which provides technical and regulatory support for the city's industrial pretreatment program. The existing agreement includes a not-to-exceed amount of one hundred three thousand five hundred dollars, which has now been fully utilized, while several required regulatory tasks remain incomplete. The additional workload is the result of unforeseen issues discovered during contracted scope, including a detailed local limits evaluation required by the Missouri Department of Natural Resources and enforcement, um, actions related to non-compliant industrial users. To complete the remaining federally and state mandated requirements such as renewing and issuing industrial user permits, updating legal authority, providing enforcement assistance and submitting the local limits part two evaluation, the department is requesting amendment to the contract with the increase of thirty-five thousand dollars. These tasks are essential for maintaining compliance with the city's three NPDES permits and ensuring continued regulatory certification of the industrial pretreatment program.
All right, call for the reading of bill number twenty-two-five dash two zero three.
Bill number twenty-two-five two oh three. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for additional funding for industrial pretreatment program services.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion in second for the second reading of bill number twenty-two-five dash two zero three. Do I have any counsel discussion regarding that bill? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty-two-five two oh three. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for additional funding for industrial pretreatment program services.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion in second for the final passage of bill number twenty-two-five dash two zero three. Do I have any counsel discussion regarding the bill? Having heard none, roll call please.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes and thank you Chairwoman Franklin. Up next, we have, uh, Community Development. Chairwoman Foster, you have the floor.
Thank you. We have two items this evening. Uh, the first of which is a strategic planning presentation. I would like to call interim chief building official, Demetrius Maduros, please.
My name is Demetrius Maduros. I'm the interim chief building official and hopeful permanent. Uh, this is my strategic vision for Sedalia's Building Department. Uh, emphasizing community support, operational excellence, teamwork and life safety. These are the priorities I believe the CBO should have in this position. Uh, ensuring life safety and quality through consistent application of codes and standards, equal enforcement and common sense approach to protect property in our community, manage workflows and supervise building inspectors and code enforcement for operational efficiency, promote professional development and teamwork across the department and foster community interactions to build trust and achieve shared goals. I really believe that fostering community interactions, building trust is the key to a better future. Sorry, I got notes going on. Code enforcement, let's start with code enforcement. Philosophy and focus areas. Equal enforcement across neighborhoods to ensure fairness in our approach. Common sense approach that prioritizes practical compliance as quality over quantity. Efficiency and process to reduce lengthy timelines and repeat visits. Friendly customer service to build trust and encourage positive change in our community. Teamwork between code enforcement, code officers and building inspectors for consistent results and encourage compliance through positive community engagement for sustainable results. Balance fairness with firm standards to support a safe, orderly city. I would like to really emphasize the practical compliance. We're not going to get after our citizens to paint in January. We want to have a quality over quantity focus when applying the property maintenance code. With that and a common sense approach to what is and isn't equal enforcement, I believe we can provide a positive service to our community. Code enforcement caseload in progress, from three hundred and ninety-plus open files to under a hundred active files through practical, community-focused enforcement. Three hundred and ninety-plus open files, including some that were over three years old. These files were closed using dedicated, practical enforcement methods. The active caseload is now under a hundred, reflecting measurable progress. Teamwork and community-focused approaches drive efficiency and better resource allocation. And the result is improved neighborhood quality and a smarter use of staff resources. Having our file and caseload down from over three hundred and ninety-plus is a game changer. It's almost impossible to reach out to three hundred and ninety-plus individual property owners each week and discuss their violation. Having that number down to under a hundred allows us to have a face-to-face and community-focused approach to each property owner individually. Code enforcement SOP, community first. It's a standard operating procedure. Formalizing fair, consistent procedures that prioritize time for compliance, friendly engagement and neighborhood improvement. Clear compliance timelines to define extended, consistent cure periods to allow corrective action before penalties. We want to give people a reasonable amount of time to correct issues before we start the penalty process, before we start issuing notice of violations, citations and court summons. Friendly engagement protocols, training officers and customer service techniques and de-escalation for respectful interactions. I want our officers to be friendly and promote positive experiences in a tough situation. I believe with that route, we can impact positive changes in the situation without causing any additional stress. Community support options, offer referrals to local services, permit assistance and volunteer resources for owners, allowing our staff to provide pamphlets for available assistance in the community and help them with a permitting process if it's needed. Collaborative inspection flow: encourage pre-inspection outreach, joint walkthroughs to resolve issues cooperatively. The key word there is "pre-inspection." I want to give our community time to make repairs or changes before we create a file or a case on the violations. Equitable enforcement rules: standardize criteria and documentation to ensure fairness and common sense decisions. Simply put, I want to standardize the equal treatment of every property owner. Consistent communication: use clear notices, timelines, and follow-ups that explain steps and available help. Consistent: our communication with everyone needs to be consistent. And number seven, performance and feedback: track outcomes, collect community feedback, refine SOPs regularly for improvement. This is something I'm very passionate about. I'm looking forward to starting a feedback policy or an open-door policy, something along those lines, as like a one dedicated day, possibly quarterly, where anyone can come into the staff conference room and provide me with their opinions or their ideas on our processes, our SOP, or our code enforcement in general. The point is to give us more community-level and community-involved decisions, directions, sorry. Fostering teamwork and customer service in code enforcement: build cooperation, respectful engagement, and consistent fair enforcement to increase compliance and community trust. Cross-training between building, between code enforcement and building inspectors to promote shared understanding and faster responses. Customer-first interactions: polite, clear communications to increase quality repairs in a timely manner. Team huddles and debriefs for problem-solving and consistent enforcement decisions, common sense enforcement, equitable application of codes with safety-focused judgment, and community education, proactive outreach to reach raised satisfaction and long-term compliance. In summary, respectful, efficient, and consistent enforcement drives quality community improvement. I would like to hit on one thing for this slide, and that's the first box, cross-training. That is not meant to be construed as building inspectors being code enforcement or vice versa. It is about understanding. If you know how houses are built or buildings are built, the construction of it, then you have more understanding as to what needs to be repaired and how it is repaired. This will allow us to have more common sense and quality focus when approaching the property maintenance code. Building inspectors. Number one, life safety is our highest priority. Rigorous inspections, specialized reviews to assure structural integrity and public safety. Thorough plan reviews and targeted inspections to uphold building standards, ensuring quality standards are RFL. Number three is training. To have a better grasp of the construction process, the ICC curriculum training, strengthening technical skills so inspectors keep pace with evolving construction standards. Contractor support and relationships: constructive guidance that improves compliance and community confidence. Contractor support is a big deal for me. If our contractors respect us and we foster that relationship, we can improve the city's construction standards, improving the quality of life for everyone. And number five, efficiency, friendliness, and teamwork. Building inspectors should focus on fair, common sense solution and customer service. 2024 and 2025 Downtown and Historical Inspections: over 150-plus completed inspections across the downtown and historical districts. Life safety and preservation balanced, protecting our historical fabric while meeting modern standards, supports revitalization, safer, attractive downtown to boost community vitality. Align with department goals, efficiency, customer service, and teamwork. The outcome is preserved heritage and contemporary safety to equal a thriving downtown community. Training for building inspectors: in-house continued training to deepen expertise in complex structural and mechanical systems to keep pace with evolving codes. Number one, needs assessment: identify high-risk systems and code changes to target specialized inspection skills. Number two is curriculum development: utilize mechanical and life safety inspections aligned with the current building codes. Number three, I'm very excited about this, hands shadowing to reinforce complex assessment techni- I think it's very important that our buildings with peer shadowing, we're able to grow better as a unit. Number four, ongoing refresher sessions: regular updates for rapid changes in construction methods and building codes. And number five, performance feedback: technical reviews and coaching to measure skill growth and ensure compliance. This is broken down as our base plan review process when somebody turns in set of plans to the building department. The enhanced plan review: prioritizing life safety. Step one, intake and triage: collecting plans, verify completeness prioritized by safety risk and project type. Two is the structural review: detailed assessment of loads, materials, foundations, seismic, and code compliance. Number three is the MEP review: thorough checks of mechanical, electrical, plumbing systems for code and safety. Number four, this one utilizes the fire department. It is the life safety assessment: rigorous review of egress, fire protection, alarms, and occupant safety measures. I'd like to give a very quick shout-out to Mr. Jacob Carver and Mr. Daniel Shaw for providing the building department with fire plans examination. It is truly an appreciated service. Number five, compliance feedback: clear corrections issued to designer slash contractor for prompt remediation. We have to be clear in our response as to what needs to be addressed in a plan set, what needs to be fixed, to ensure it's put into action on the outreach and contractor relations. Actors as community resources to improve compliance, safety, help volunteer opportunities to showcase inspectors as community partners and build trust. Drive consistent, clear code information through you type page to help local issues on enforce policy twice focus direction while all the what actions search promptly. At the end, contract smoother projects. Ladies and gentlemen, popular tractors in the in the morning, the day of your will be out there the same day. Inspection sponsors here's between the city of and it supports smoother construct safety focus. It improves responsiveness to contractors and projects, reduces project delays and keeps schedules on track, and demonstrates a commitment to service excellence. Training: the cornerstone of growth and excellence. This will apply to both building inspectors and code enforcement. ICC-focused education to boost safety, quality, and service. Ongoing ICC train to keep staff current on regulations, technologies, and best practices. Life safety focus for building inspectors to ensure consistent code-driven inspections. Efficiency and customer service is an emphasis for code enforcement, timely, friendly, common sense approach, teamwork and professional development to reflect the city's commitment to continuous improvement. And the outcome of these is enhanced safety, quality, and service delivery across all of the city of Sedalia's departments. Build community trust through employee engagement. Establish a support system encouraging department staff to invest in community assistance. This support system can be as simple as staff supporting staff in a group volunteering effort. Promote volunteer opportunities and organize city cleanups to build teamwork and visibility. Host front porch conversations focused on quality of life over violation counts. I want to start a trend in our department, having old-school, American front porch conversations with our community, reaching out to see how we can help improve the quality of life in our community, not focusing on the number of violations we can find. The outcomes: our improved employee morale, better public perception, and a stronger community trust. Vision for a brighter, more vibrant Sedalia. Balanced enforcement, common sense decisions, and community-first service to improve livability. Balanced enforcement that is fair, consistent, and guided by common sense, customer-friendly code enforcement, efficiency, clear communication, and respectful interactions. A teamwork-first culture for inspectors and staff, training, and collaboration. A life safety focus for building inspectors to present, protect residents and property. Create safe, attractive, and welcoming public spaces in thriving neighborhoods, and encourage citizen and staff to create, co-create solutions and boost livability. Steps for community support and civic pride: commitment to a building department that strengthens Sedalia. Reaffirm commitment to community support, training, and positive relationships. Inspire love for Sedalia through consistent, friendly service and community-focused goals. Empower staff and residents to build a safer, healthier, and more vibrant city. Prioritize efficiency, customer service, teamwork, and equal enforcement, and use consistent engagement to support Sedalia's community and continued positive growth. My wife and I recently purchased a home in Sedalia, and in working here and living here, meeting with the neighbors, enjoying the countless number of large gatherings, holiday moments, festivals, block parties, small businesses, and all the wonderful people, we have truly come to love Sedalia, and I believe that this department can truly be a help-up for our community. So please join me in turning this vision into action. You have any questions? Now is the time.
Anybody have any questions for the interim CBO?
I don't have a question per se, but it's a couple things. The same-day inspections, it's going to be a big win for your department. It's a complaint I get regular, so I like to hear that. The only other thing I would like to suggest is that when code enforcement goes out on a complaint, on that first contact, I would like them to have that or list of available resources to help people out. I'd like to see them have it on hand so that they can present it on the first contact for that. I think that would be a step in the right direction.
Absolutely. So in speaking with our code officers, Mason Matea and Chris Balance, we have the list given to us by, I think it's PCCP if I'm not mistaken, I might be. But they gave us a list of local assistance programs, volunteers, stuff like that to keep in our trucks. We do have them in there. We also have started, I don't know how aggressively far back it's gone, but we started putting them in the letters that we're sending out when we do send out a notice of violation, that they're on the secondary page, there is a list of local volunteer or help groups.
Maybe even before the letter, just when you take that first contact, it's handed to the homeowner.
Absolutely.
Council, have any other questions? Thank you.
Yep, thank you guys.
All right, second item for this evening is an amendment to the Code of Ordinances. This ordinance amends the city code to prohibit the use of intermodal shipping containers as accessory structures on properties zoned R1, R2, and R3 within the city of Sedalia. The ordinance formalizes the city's position that shipping containers are inconsistent with the intended character, appearance, and land use expectations of residential neighborhoods. This action is being brought forward in response to both past citizen complaints and a new round of recent complaints regarding the placement of shipping containers in residential areas. The ordinance adds Section 10-93 to the city code, defining relevant terms and clearly prohibiting shipping containers as residential accessory uses while still allowing temporary placement only when permitted under existing regulations. Section 10-84 through 10-92. Violations would be subject to the enforcement and fine provisions already established to the code. Approval of this ordinance ensures zoning consistency, maintains neighborhood standards, and addresses repeated citizen concerns by providing clear enforceable limitations on shipping container use in residential districts.
All right, call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-204.
Bill Number 2025-204, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the city of Sedalia, Missouri relating to limitations on the use of intermodal shipping containers for properties zoned residential within the city of Sedalia.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion in second for second reading. Do I have any council discussion? Do you have a point of information, Administrator Wart? Would this affect any existing permitted containers or inside?
So if the, excuse me, if it has been previously put in place under, for example, a past building code, then it would be grandfathered in.
Okay. And then what about whenever somebody's using one of these containers for construction? Well, they have a bill, open building permit.
So as the, as the new ordinance would allow, if they have an open building permit, they can use it as like a job trailer, construction storage, that sort of thing. But once that permit and the construction's over, they have to remove it.
Okay, and this is just for the R1 through R3? As far as commercial, you can still utilize these containers?
That is correct.
Okay, very good. All right, with that, any other council discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill Number 2025-204, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the city of Sedalia, Missouri relating to limitations on the use of intermodal shipping containers for properties zoned residential within the city of Sedalia.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion in second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding it? Having heard none, roll call please?
Franklin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
All in favor?
All right, motion passes, and that concludes Community Development. Thank you Chairwoman Foster. Next item is any miscellaneous items from the city council or city administrator. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share this evening? You have the floor, Mr. Hiller?
This kind pertains to you, Mayor, your family. Um, what, Thanksgiving? Thanksgiving holiday, they uh, her sister puts on, helps put on a big Jeep car show down to Lake of the Ozarks. Operation Freedom Exchange, all the veterans and the first responders. They handed out over 600 meals to the veterans, first responders here in Sedalia, Marshall, and Lake of the Ozark. And then they also partnered with this organization from Kansas City, Surviving Spouse. I don't, I didn't catch the name of that, but it's from this day forward, all of our first responders, our firemen, if God forbid they're killed in action, this organization will give them their relatives within 48 hours $40,000. I mean, I'd rather have the firefighter, I think it's bigger than to take care of the family. And so on, on that half, I think that's a big deal for Sedalia and for our veterans. And then I also want to put out a challenge to everybody. Something that has been going on for years and years and years, and I've been supporter of it for years and years. When I was racing, I used to take my race car out to wherever they were. They'd either be up on the top of a building somewhere, or they were down at K DRO. The, it used to be called the Mayor's Christmas Tree uh, fund, and they, they collect and gather toys for, for the needy, and I'd always, I'd always go out on the way to Marshall that Friday to the parade up there. I'd always challenge all the racers to come out and, and donate $20 themselves, the other race teams. And I'd support it. My car club supports it. We gave them over $500 here last week. So I'd like to say, everybody, if you got $10, that, that, that'd be fine. So that's all I want to, I want to thank, thank them for doing that. They've been doing that for, like I say, a lot of years. It's, it's called the Community Center now. They're in the building out there behind the Food for Less, so.
Thank you, Councilman Hiller. Anyone else?
In conjunction to what Bob was saying on the dinners that were given away. Um, I know ConAgra donated about $10,000 worth of food to them. And so if you know anybody that worked at ConAgra, you can thank them. A lot of work went into prepping that because they got mac and cheese, mashed potatoes, the gravy, the turkey, pies. Cause they got mac and cheese, mashed potatoes, the gravy, the turkey pies. I can't remember everything that was in it. And one of the groups from Springfield that came up was called Operation Freedom Exchange and. She was from Springfield, but she was going to be at every food giveaway. So it is a good company. But I did want to let everybody know it was Conagra that did ten thousand dollars.
All right, thank you, Councilman Ames. Anyone else? All right, having heard none, we'll go ahead and move on to the good and welfare. This is the time we set aside for Sedalia residents to address their city council directly as a reminder, anyone wishing to speak must have signed up in advance using the form located in the lobby prior to the start of the meeting. That form requires your name, address, telephone number and agenda item you wish to address. Comments must relate to items on tonight's agenda unless a formal written request to speak on non. A non agenda topic was submitted at least two days, business days in advance. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to present their remarks. Please, please clearly state your name and address for the record when you come to the microphone. This is not a time for debate or dialogue with council members. The council chambers is a limited public forum and all remarks must be directed at the councils a whole. I would remind everyone that personal attacks on specific city employees by name or title are not permitted. If you wish to file a formal complaint regarding an employee, may do so in writing through the clerk's office. Disruptive behavior such shouting, refusing to yield the floor or blocking the view of others will not be tolerated and viol- violators may be asked to leave or removed by law enforcement if necessary. Your comments tonight will be recorded as a part of the official public record. We thank you for your cooperation in maintaining decorum. At this time, will we begin? For calling forward those who have signed up to speak and Clerk Myers, if you could do that.
Yes, I have two individuals that have signed up tonight, one for agenda item, one for non agenda item. Uh, for the agenda item, I have Debbie Covington. She's got four subjects she want to talk about tonight. Um, the strategic presentation on the fire department. The joint agreement and code amendment on the fire fund to loggers. The strategic presentation for code enforcement and the amendment on the shipping containers.
Your agenda tonight, in my opinion, absolute lunacy. Our chief building official and community development director just resigned suddenly, yet somehow an interim. Is already scheduled to present a full strategic plan for code enforcement. Interims don't write strategic plans in a few days. These takes weeks and months. So the public is left with one obvious conclusion. The plan was written long before his resignation, possibly not by him. Someone else has been directing code enforcement behind the scenes. And the people of Sedalia deserve to know who that person is. Maduro said tonight that the staff welcomes thoughtful input and open dialogue, yet there was very little of either. Just scripts, if we can't have open dialogue here at city council, where does it start? I love much of what Maduro said tonight, but actions do speak louder than words. Will Labor Municipal Law allow you to implement this, all this, Mr. Maduro's? I'm sure they will since the illegal home demolition spree has now been put to a halt by Missouri Department of Natural Resources, a win for Sedalia. Then the very next item makes the timing even more suspicious, a rushed ordinance to restrict shipping containers in residential areas. Let us be honest, this is not about aesthetics or safety. This is part of a gentrification strategy. Shipping container homes are one of the most real, last real options for affordable housing. They're safe, fast to build and cost a fraction of traditional homes banning them shuts the door on low income families and working class residents in a town already facing a housing shortage. And when you combine that with the city's push to turn the north side into a industrial corridor, the bigger picture becomes clear. Remove affordable housing, reclassify neighborhoods, push out long term residents, that's gentrification. And it is displacement, not community development. Again, this is how I feel. I would love to have dialogue to be corrected on this, um, but you guys can't talk. Then we have five thousand dollar wayfinding signs, twelve signs, five thousand dollars each somehow totaling the program cost to a penny. I don't fault the company, I fault the council. This is shady business in my opinion, and if I'm wrong, I love for you to explain it, except of course you can't speak. We also have a major financial restructuring of the firefighters retirement system being pushed through quietly during staff turnover again. The public left in the dark and on top of all that, we're told we must sign up to speak before the meeting even begins. How can the public? Ask meaningful questions when we don't even know what will happen yet? That's not transparency, that's a barrier. Finally, a closed session under legal real estate personnel and contracts all at once. When a city uses every exemption in one night, it signals that more is happening behind closed doors and the public is being allowed to hear. Council, this is an agenda that does not reflect openness. It reflects a city fast tracking ordinances restricting affordable housing, reshaping neighborhoods without consent, limiting public speak, speech and hiding critical decisions. Sedalia deserves transparency, accountability and a government.
Mrs. Covington, your time is expired.
All right, up next. Uh, for non agenda, I have Kevin Patton.
I was gonna ask for a point of information on the funds for the wayfinding signs. Can we uh say where they came from?
Um, do you like the funding source, the point of information is for the funding source regarding the wayfinding signs? I'll direct that point of information to Administrator Ward.
The thirty thousand dollars is from the um, uh, Department of Tourism, the State Department of Tourism and thirty thousand of it is our funds.
Grant money, correct?
Ma'am.
Yes.
You, please remove you, ma'am. No, please remove yourself. Sit down. Ma'am, sit down. Thank you. Yep. All right, next person on the uh, list.
I have Kevin Patton. I don't think he's here in that matter. That's the, that's the only other one I had.
All right, very good. I'll go ahead and entertain the motion to move to closed session.
Uh, motion to move to closed session. And pursuant to subsections one, two, three and twelve.
I'm a motion to move to closed session. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any council discussion? Roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
Scribner.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yeah.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
He was getting the elevator. Came out, he was moving.
Haven't looked.
Haven't gotten a text about that.
I can't imagine that they would call it off.
It's hard work. They're gonna do the wrestling.
We get to go, Chris? I do have a motion to return to the uh, open session.
Motion to return to open session.
Have a motion in second to return to the open session. Roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Ames.
Here.
Scribner.
Here.
Bogus.
Here.
Hiller.
Here.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
All right, now do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion to adjourn in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?